Okay, it's four o'clock and we'll go ahead and call to order the March 14, 2016, meeting of the Salina City Commission, and we'll start with a roll call, please.
Mayor Blanchard.
Here.
Commissioner Crawford.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hardy.
Here.
Okay, great. Hey, before we get started, I just kinda wanna bring folks up to speed. At 2:45, the Water Department received a phone call that said there was a bomb in the building, or a bomb threat, so to speak, and at that time, Police Department and Sheriff's Office went through their protocol and did a sweep through the building and determined that that threat was, at least for the time being, not credible, but I just wanted to let everybody know that, so if anybody chooses that they don't want to be here, except for all of you here. At least two of you need to stick around. We're gonna need a quorum, so two of you can leave.
Three.
But anyway, just wanted to give notice of that, because that's where the city manager and I were away to, and appreciate the Sheriff's Office and Police Department, building authority staff, doing diligent work to check for that. So, having said that, we'll go ahead and move on with the meeting, and at this time, I'll ask that all who are able to please stand and join in the Pledge of Allegiance, and we'll observe a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to start with awards and proclamations.
The month of March, 2016, has theater in our schools in the city of Salina. Nathan Enderschak, Salina South Drama Club President, will read the proclamation.
Nathan, welcome. Or should I say Gomez?
Ah, whatever you like.
Okay.
Whereas theater as an all art is an important part of the human experience, and whereas the arts are an integral part of the community and pride of a community, and whereas the majority of U.S. employers rate creativity and innovation among the top five skills that will increase importance in the next five years, and whereas theater provides us with sources of artistic and literary value and equips us with the tools to appreciate these values, and whereas theater provides us with a way to grow and develop our creativity as well as our language, memory, and communication skills, and whereas theater has the ability to demonstrate valuable lessons about universal concepts such as love, honor, prejudice, pride, and/or passion, and whereas children can gain confidence and improve their learning through the drama and theater experiences, and whereas 90 percent of patrons who attend theater regularly first saw plays as students. So now, therefore, I, John Blanchard, Mayor, by virtue of authority vested in me by the laws of Salina, do hereby proclaim that the month of March is recognized as Theater in Our Schools Month, and witness whereof I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city, Salina, Kansas, this 14th day of March, 2016.
Great. I understand you have buttons.
Yes, I do.
And I'll let you give those. Customarily, what we do here is we like to ask if you have any upcoming events or anything else in conjunction with Theater Month in schools that you'd like to talk about. Now, feel free to show us your improvisation skills, if you need to. We're sure you have them, but I personally want to make sure that you give us a full disclosure.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Currently, we are working on our one-act student-directed shows that we'll be performing for in March, and currently, we're also working on our new upcoming show, Pride and Prejudice, along with we-do-weekly activities in March to celebrate this.
Excellent. Now, I understand. Did you guys write the proclamation yourselves?
Yes, we did.
Well done. Now, what are the dates of those performances?
Our one-act performances are March 31st and April 1st, and Pride and Prejudice won't be until April, and that's the 21st through the 23rd.
Okay, and I encourage everybody to go, because I don't know how many people saw The Addams Family, but it was awesome. Or I like to say, it was killer.
Oh, thank you.
Anyway, great job to you and your group and your drama instructor, Kate Lindsay, in the audience, and the theater department head at Central is Chad Newlick, and he's not here, but we hope that they're doing special stuff this month as well. So, thanks for being here. I have your signed proclamation. I'll trade you. Thanks. Thank you. Is that it? Nope, we got one more. Okay.
Mayor Blanchard to recognize outgoing fire battalion chief Jeff Riddle.
Okay, great. Jeff's here, and Jeff, if you'd come on up, I've got a little something I want to read here, just a short little biography, and then hopefully you'll give a few sentences, but thanks for right now.
Thank you.
I'm gonna put you on this phone. I'm gonna have you go behind the lectern there.
All right.
And then, this isn't, don't worry, I'm not Don Rickles, and this isn't a roast.
That's okay. I can handle it.
But as I said, we appreciate your service, and just a little bit about Chief Jeff Riddle's service here, 30 years with the Salina Fire Department. He was afforded the opportunity to promote to Battalion Chief during the interim Fire Chief position, and will retire as a Battalion Chief for the Fire Department. The department had the opportunity to hire Chief Riddle's son as a department member to carry on their legacy with the Salina Fire Department as well. Jeff has been active in both Fire and EMS portions of the job, and he continues to obtain his status as a paramedic today. Jeff has unique talents in woodworking, very good, and has contributed to the Police Department with, made the dining table, which was a big, pretty big project, 18-foot-long table, and also, all of us that toured the Fire Department got to see your creative works and the cabinetry that you created over there, too. So, those are gonna be long-lasting legacies, but the work that you provided and the service you did will also, a great legacy you leave behind, so we thank you for your service.
Thank you. It's been a privilege to work for the city and the citizens. The city's been a great place to work. I'm proud to have my son. That's why I'm doing this. There's not a bunch of finer people than the people back here in this back row to work with. It's been outstanding. We've got new leadership. I think he's gonna carry on very well and do a terrific job like the rest of the guys did. Can't thank everybody enough. When the city manager knows you by your first name, that's a privilege, and that's awesome. I've always appreciated that, Jason. I just thank the city for everything they've done for me, and the place is gonna go on without me, I guarantee you that. They're gonna do a terrific job over there, and it's been a privilege to work here.
Well, thank you again. And Jason, since Chief Mulikin isn't here to say a few words, would you mind on a personal note?
Be happy to. Some people know Jeff, some don't. He's one of the nicest guys you'll ever meet, and as you mentioned, helpful. You kinda covered that, I think. I think they're enjoying that large dining room table. One of the things, though, that I, when I think of Jeff, I think of him at scout camp, because if you go up there with your kids, when your kids are young and they're in scouts, your boys, you'll go to, up there, you'll enjoy storms and all kinds of things, but you'll see Jeff there, and Jeff's gonna teach you on the mannequin. He's gonna teach you a little CPR and do some other things up there. He's always been extremely helpful up there, and so you can see there's a love to help people, help kids, and teach them things that they'll really help, may save their life someday, and that they'll carry into their adulthood. So, I've always appreciated that and always enjoyed just working with him and all the guys at the department, but super guy. We're gonna miss him.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, and thanks again.
Thank you.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes.
Oh, you know what? Let me interrupt you.
Okay, please, do.
I looked over there like we were moving on. I didn't want to miss Citizens Forum.
Oh.
Anyways, we'll go ahead and open up Citizens Forum. It's an opportunity for anyone to come up and speak regarding any item that is not on today's agenda, and if you could, just limit your comments to five minutes or less and give your name and address. No action will be taken, but if there are questions that we can answer, we certainly will try. So, anybody here wish to participate in Citizens Forum? Okay, well, I guess we can move on to that.
Real quick, Mayor, if I may jump in.
Sure.
We just did receive the final hall clear from the Police Department, so with regards to the threat that you mentioned earlier. So, I just wanted to make sure everyone's aware of that.
Okay, appreciate that. Thanks.
Okay, item 6.1, approve the minutes of March 7, 2016. Item 6.2, authorize the purchase of an aquatic climbing wall from Pyramid USA Incorporated at Kenwood Cove for the amount of $27,000, $627.
Okay, are there any items on the consent agenda that any commissioner would like to have removed or amended? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda items as presented. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five, zero. Move to Administration.
7.1, second reading ordinance number 16-10825, granting a telecommunications franchise to Nextech Incorporated.
Okay, ordinance 16-10825 was passed on first reading, March 7, 2016, and since that time, we've received no comments. Do we have any public comment at this time? Seeing none, we'll return it to the Commission for Action.
Mr. Mayor, move adoption on second reading of ordinance number 16-10825, granting a telecommunications franchise to Nextech Incorporated.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to approve on second reading ordinance number 16-10825, granting a telecommunications franchise to Nextech Incorporated. Is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and have a roll call on this.
Commissioner Crawford?
Aye.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hardy?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Blanchard?
Aye, that motion carries five, zero.
Item 7.2, second reading ordinance number 16-10824, amending section 2-208 through 2-211, and adding section 2-212 to the Salina Business Improvement District Design Review Board Ordinance.
Okay, ordinance number 16-10824 was passed on first reading on March 7, 2016, and since that time, no comments have received, but do we have any further information on the, on that item? Are we taking that up in a different, in a different setting? The, does this, does the ordinance pass straight through, or do we have to consider anything on the application fee?
Can the ordinance pass through without that fee? Is it, is it designed that way? Yeah, let me, Commissioners, in section 2-209, the title of that section is Application for Certificate of Compatibility. There's a subsection C paying the application fee determined pursuant to section 2-2, and so I'll raise this in the form of a question and make sure I get the proper nod from legal counsel, but unless you should decide to have an application fee pursuant to section 2-2, you can leave this language in and you won't have a fee. You'd have to still add that fee in 2-2, I presume. Is that accurate? Okay, under the fee resolution. That's correct. So, you have two choices. You could eliminate section C altogether, subsection C altogether, or you could leave it in and simply never have an application fee. It's your choice to establish that in an application fee under a resolution. If you should choose you don't want to do that, you don't have to amend your ordinance to not have a fee. You can leave your ordinance the same and not have a fee, or you could take that subsection out, which means later, if you want to have a fee, you may choose to add it back in and do an ordinance read and then a resolution again.
Okay, I already filed my minutes from the last meeting, but I thought that when Commissioner Ryan made the motion on that, it included something about the fee.
That we had the ability to amend the fee.
Yeah.
But this language, it allows us to do that at a later date.
Yeah, all the language does.
So, the language is there for the fee. It's just we haven't designated it.
It's enabling language, is all it is. It doesn't establish a fee at all.
Okay.
So, and I do, I think, just to be sure that the recommendation from the, it's on Downtown Inc. is clear. I'll ask Gary this, or actually Dean is the person to ask. I don't know, Gary, if you didn't have the answer to this. I think their preference was, they didn't want to have a fee at all. Their preference probably would be not to have the subsection C, but as I mentioned, the governing body, you always reserve the right to have, to apply a fee if you should choose on anything like this, so simply having the enabling language in your ordinance doesn't make you do it. It doesn't prohibit you from doing it.
Okay.
You still have that full option.
Did we, did we pass this on first reading with then staff, a direction to staff to bring back some sort of, to work through the process, to come up with a fee? Because I know there was a discussion about a minimal fee, not a, not a big fee, but.
The number 35 was, I recall.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think you're right. I think it was $35 for a.
You're correct that the Downtown Incorporated Board did not wish to have any fee associated with this at all at this time.
Right.
Is that something that could be placed on the comprehensive fee schedule at a later date, or does it have to go through this process?
Just real quick, I'm taking a look at your minutes from the last meeting.
Do you think Downtown Incorporated objects to the language existing in there, that a fee might be placed at a future time?
I don't believe they object to the language itself. It was just the fact that they did not desire a fee at this particular time. That's more of a city requirement than it is a Downtown Incorporated requirement.
What do the minutes say? I believe I just leave it alone.
Yeah, I think just pass it.
Did you find that? I can read you the part I found in the minutes. Says Mayor Blanchard asked if the motion included the application fee. Greg Banks, the city attorney, stated the ordinance included language stating the fee would be included in section 2.2 of the Salina Code.
Yeah, the, in the conversation, just prior to the essay, Mayor Blanchard stated he would be in favor of imposing a $35 certificate of compatibility permit fee. That was after prior conversation that you just mentioned. What we would need to, well, really, what we'd need to do, we could, we could bring the fee resolution back to you at any meeting, so.
Okay.
This ordinance is set up to allow you to have a fee, so it's really just a matter of bringing a fee resolution back.
Okay, so you can bring that fee resolution back then. Okay, great. Okay, well, we'll move on then. Is there any public comment at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring this back up for action on the straight ordinance.
I move we approve on second reading ordinance number 16-10824, amending section 2-208 through 2-211, and adding section 2-212 to the Salina Business Improvement District Design Review Board Ordinance.
Second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion in a second to approve on second reading ordinance number 16-10824, amending section 2-208 through 2-211, and adding section 2-212 to the Salina Business Improvement District Design Review Board Ordinance. Are there any, is there any further discussion at this time? And seeing none, we'll have a roll call on this as well.
Commissioner Crawford?
Aye.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hardy?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Blanchard?
Aye, that motion carries five, zero.
Item 7.3, award contract for the abatement of nuisances related to property maintenance in the city of Salina for a period of April 1, 2016, through March 31, 2017.
Mr. Hobby?
Thank you. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you very much. This is an opportunity on an annual basis that we go out for bid for abatement processes or the removal of nuisances within our community. We average somewhere around 175 nuisances that are abated on an annual basis. Some years it's more and some years it's less. I'm almost gonna speculate by the traffic we've had so far this year, it may be a little bit more than 175 nuisances of being abated, our guys being quite active out in the field. We received five requests for bids, five proposals for bids, excuse me, one from Pot and Construction, another from Moss Treescapes Nursery, the other from Team Handyman, Laux Home Repair, and Jim's Remodeling. Usually, we have very little discrepancy between the bids, but this year, we happen to have identical bids, except for one area. Two companies, Moss Treescapes and Laux Home Repair, have bid the exact same dollar amount per hour for grass and weeds, securing appliances, the limb abatements, and debris abatement, as well as snow and ice removal. The dump runs were exactly the same. The only difference is for the additional charges, when we'd get into some very large and major abatements, the difference would be the charge for their Bobcat and trailers and those type of things that would be used at that basis, and that difference is $5 per hour of use of those processes. This last year, we had less than 10 processes that we needed the extra equipment, so we're talking about a minimal amount of money as far as the concern of the abatement is concerned. So, we're gonna bring that back to you for your final approval to choose between Moss Treescapes or Laux Home Repair. We have not worked in the past with moss on specific issues other than some tree trimming and those type of things over the past seven or eight years that I've been involved, but we have been with Laux Home Repair. We've had, I think it's five years that we have been working with them. In the past seven, eight years, we've been working on this process to do abatements. We have two processes for you to choose from as far as action plans are concerned. One would be to approve Moss Treescapes at the value that they have produced, and they would be the low bidder on the Bobcat, the heavy truck, and tractor by $5 per hour, or you have the option of going to Laux Home Repair and knowing that our abatement fees for our large equipment such as bush hog and tractor and snow blades and those type of things would be $5 more per hour. I'd say it's gonna be minimal differences between the two, but we would take your suggestion as far as who to work with, as far as our abatement contractor, for the term April 1, 2016, through March 31, 2017. I'd be more than glad to stand for any questions.
Questions for staff?
Do you know the size of the two companies in terms of number of employees or the number of pieces of equipment?
I believe that Moss Treescapes has some larger equipment, because they're in the tree removal business as well, and so they have some of the larger equipment than what Laux does, but either one of them have enough ample crews that we require them to be there within a 24-hour period from when we respond, and so they both have agreed to be there within that period of time with staff necessary to take care of the abatement.
If the contract is awarded, excuse me, to both, I'm assuming it's, the work is split roughly 50/50. Does that cause any operational difficulties?
It would not for us. We would just go one to the other, back and forth, and pick them that way. We have not done that in the past, as far as awarding two contracts. We have awarded, it's been four or five years ago, we awarded a secondary contract to a company because of, we knew we had several big abatements coming up. We knew that they may be struggling to have enough staff to take care of them, but that's, that's the closest we had as far as using two separate companies together.
Do you know if these companies would have submitted a bid based on a given history of work?
Yes, they're, they're given estimates as how many complaints we get a year, how many abatements we get, and what type of abatements. They're pretty well broke down into, there's so many tall grass and weeds, there's so many trash and debris. These people do not do inoperable vehicles, but they will do refrigerator repair, they go out and take doors off refrigerator or remove the appliance or something of that nature as well. So, they have a good general idea of what they would be running into.
I was just wondering about the volume that they would anticipate by having this contract.
We've not had a problem in the last seven years with a single contractor, so.
I'm just talking about if they expected 175 pieces of work as opposed to 80 or 85.
That's very possible. That is very possible. We did not ask that question, but.
If the numbers would have changed based on doing half the work instead of all the work?
Their, their dollar amount per hour may have changed. That's correct.
On this, is the main, is a big part of the difference their snow removal equipment?
That's the big thing, is the large equipment on the very last additional charges for Bobcat and heavy truck and those type of things is the only difference between the two bids.
What, what percentage of snow removal is part of the, our normal abatement?
We do less than 20 a year anymore.
So, these last category items are rare?
Less than 10%.
Rare, okay. And then, has, has Moss Treescape and, you said that Laux Home Repair has done it for the last five years?
Several years.
Have we had these five bidders bid consistently each year, or?
Yes, we have. Yes, we have.
And Moss has been, over the last five years, bidding on this also, and?
Correct.
Okay, so this isn't like they just came in this year and?
And as you see, the difference in dollar amounts, Pot and Construction is the same bid as what they had last year and 2000, well, what we're finishing up this year, and they came back with the same dollar amount per hour. So, you see that two companies cut the bid down per hour costs, and that's one of our biggest issues, that we work with somebody on a per hour basis and be there within 24 hours of doing the abatement, so. 75 cents an hour was a good thing for us.
Okay. All right. Any further questions for staff?
If, I was just thinking about Commissioner Hardy's question. If we decided to award the contract to both, would you then have to ask them if these prices per hour were still valid for less work per company?
That is a very good question, and I can't answer that. I suppose that, that we should be at least cognizant of the idea that they know that that's what the value was gonna be as one-half of the number of abatements we do on an annual basis, because I do believe it may make a difference on their per hour cost.
Gary, when we solicited the bids, did we provide them with the, the volume history?
Yes, we did, yeah.
So, they would have at least presumed, based on our history of contracting with the single provider and getting the volume history, that there would be roughly a certain amount of work volume?
Right. Correct.
I think we need to stick with one, one provider.
Agreed. It probably would be easier on staff, to tell you the truth. We didn't have to use chicken scratchers.
Do we have any history at all using, maybe not for nuisance abatement, but I guess my question about moss is that they're in any reason that using them would, they don't have any negative marks on them or anything?
No, we have not had any problems at all with either one of the companies.
Okay. All right. Any further questions? Okay, we'll open it up for public comment if there's any at this time. Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back for further discussion as we need to maybe have a little bit before a motion is made, or maybe just a motion gets made and we discuss it after that, so.
I move to award the nuisance abatement contract to Moss Treescapes Nursery for the amounts indicated in the bid tabulation summary and contract documents for the period of April 1, 2016, through March 31, 2017, and direct staff to execute the contract for services.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to award the nuisance abatement contract to Moss Treescapes Nursery for the amounts indicated in the bid tabulation summary and contract documents for the period of April 1, 2016, through March 31, 2017, and direct staff to execute the contract for services. Is there any further discussion at this time? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five, zero. Thank you.
Item 7.4, authorize the addition of a commercial plans examiner, building inspector position for the Development Services Department, Building Services Division.
It's the Gary Hobby Show.
It is today. Thank you very much. We've been here since one o'clock, anyway. One of the things that's been coming to our attention over the last year or so with all the projects that are happening in the community, in which we're very, very pleased it's happening, is that we've seen our assessed valuation going up in our community as far as the size of projects that are being completed in the, in the community, and we know the school projects are gonna run for approximately two and a half more years, and we have several downtown projects that we're anticipating starting as well. We have, in our situation, where a few years ago, we eliminated a commercial plans examiner position and incorporated that into the building official's position, and we are at a point and stage this time of our program that we're running out of space and time for a building official, and he is actually completing both jobs, doing very good at that, although we're about ready to kill him in the point. He just overworked with number of hours and those type of things. Mr. Brown came about a year and a half ago, and we can see over the last four or five Mr. Brown came about a year and a half ago, and we can see over the last four or five months that his, it's time for us to find somebody to assist him with his daily output of work. He was kind of getting an idea of what we have completed as far as, and the valuation I put in there are the building permit valuations. They're not actually what the valuation would be if they were on a tax roll or something of that. That's just telling us what we receive as a building permit. So, there are no interior finishes, basically a carpet, drapes, furnishings, and that type of thing. There is no land deal that is involved with the processes, all of this is just actual structure itself, as far as our valuation is concerned. Mr. Brown has been contacted, and we've talked quite a bit over the last three or four months, and he would like to have some help with a commercial plans examiner, who will work on a part-time basis, as well as be able to have certifications in building inspection area. So, we can put this gentleman or this person out in the field on a part-time basis, doing some of the plan reviews, as well as building inspections in the field. We bring this to you because it is additional staff for our department, and we'd like your permission to move forward with advertising and trying to find a person who would fill both a commercial plans examiner, as well as a building inspector. We will require some certifications from this person. One would be a certification in the commercial plans examining. The other will be multiple certifications in the residential, excuse me, in the building inspection field area. Could be residential and commercial, or it could be a combination of both. But, our staff, we're very fortunate to have every staff member we have doing our building inspections and our plan reviews, have got multiple certifications. We feel like that gives us some credibility, as we go out on the job site, to have those certifications, so. The request today is to allow us to move forward with the advertisement and potential hiring of a combination person who will do commercial plans examining, as well as building inspection work out in the field. I'd be more than glad to stand for any questions.
Okay. Questions for staff?
Would this be considered a permanent part-time position?
This would be considered a permanent position. We have, as I do succession planning for our department, it is probably wise for us to look at someone who will be able to fill in some petition, or positions, I'll get it, within the next two years. We have several staff members who are reaching that premium age of 85 points and 65 years of age, and we feel like it's time for us to start looking at somebody to come in and backfill some of our positions.
As a clarification, I think the characterization of part-time was spending part of their time doing plan review and part of their time in the field doing inspection. I took it the same way that you did, but.
Not the number of hours, no.
Oh, okay.
We'd like to.
Yeah, part-time, 60 hours a week.
Well, our building official last week worked more than that, so.
Right.
He was pushing 72.
Well, and when I, when I look at 2014 and 2015, and the permits are roughly the same, but the valuations are double. So, they're much more complex projects and?
That would be correct, correct. Larger projects, much more complex. Salina Central, we just did the pre-construction meeting, and they have 13 phases in that project. So, we know that on a given day, we will have one, if not two inspectors there, once, if not twice. So, that's just on one project, so.
Okay, well, I think another important thing on this is, you know, we talk about trying to make streamlined processes and make things move as quickly as possible to keep projects going and everything. And I think we've run the real danger of not having, by not being staffed, that we start to slow down projects. And that's not good, especially with downtown coming up and when that starts to happen at the same time the schools do. What timing would be, when are we hoping to have someone in that position?
I went to the International Code Council website, just to see who it would be competing with. And there were 13 other jobs with the same type of classification requirements, splitting between a plans examiner and a building inspector. They're not all in the beautiful city of downtown Salina. They're all in the, you know, the western coast or the east coast, or something of that nature. Colorado is having some issues as well, but Central United States doesn't have that much going on, as we do here in Salina, so.
Okay.
I don't anticipate having anybody on staff within four months. It'll probably take closer to six.
Four to six months?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And we hope the rest of you don't burn out before then.
Well, maybe by mentioning, one of the things that we looked into was, in the interim, where the positions authorized but not filled, using what would fund salary to pay for out-of-house plan review, if we can get that coordinated. So, that, I don't know that it's as simple as bringing someone in to conduct inspections, but at least the plan review might be able to relieve some of that load.
Okay. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back up for action.
Mr. Mayor, move, we accept staff recommendation for the hiring of a new commercial plans examiner and building inspector for the Development Services Department.
Second.
Can I have a motion, the second, to accept the staff recommendation for the hiring of a new commercial plans examiner slash building inspector for the Development Services Department? Any further discussion at this time? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Good luck. Okay, do we have any other business at this time?
Mayor?
Other than?
Yeah.
Okay.
I've got an item, but at your pleasure. Commissioners, you may recall that not too long ago, we had an instance of a moderate income housing grant application and a deadline for that program preceding all the necessary land use approvals being in place. And we brought that to you and chose to attempt to authorize or endorse application in advance of all the land use approvals being in place, and without predetermining the outcome of those. And in the end, the timing kind of fell through. They weren't able to get the land use actions in place in time. We have a very similar circumstance, different developer and different program, but there is now interest in applying for a low-income housing tax credit with the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation, in a very similar circumstance. And rather than bring you the details of that and ask the applicant to come before you, staff wanted to first kind of get a sense of your appetite of, once again, considering in this case, it would be a resolution of support for low-income housing tax credit application to the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation, in advance of the land use approvals being in place for the particular site in question. So, that's probably a specific question as it relates to this request, but it seems to be a pattern that we may also want to discuss as a policy, whether we want to continue to do that, or what we wish to communicate in those type of situations.
You mentioned that the circumstances were similar, but, I mean, it seemed like the last time, the cart was way in front of the horse, because we were on a tight deadline to meet the state deadline. Are we trying, are they trying to meet a state deadline this time, too, or?
Yes, in fact, the application has been submitted to the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation. We've been contacted by the state, asking for a resolution of support, to support the application that's already been turned in.
Okay. Well, I'll just speak personally, that I was really uncomfortable the way the process went last time. And I think that not only did we, did it kind of put us in a position to make bad policy, but I think we kind of put staff in a bad position on giving us project information with a lot of, well, we really can't discuss that, and you really can't talk about that. So, my vote would be to say, I'd like to have, I'd like to have more of a policy that we have those land use considerations and approvals, at least underway, and if not in place, prior to, because I think that in a way, it almost seems like that's the way the state is expecting it to be, anyway. Their application says, do you have the proper land use?
Right. Ironically, in the other instance, there, the application had one of two boxes, the zoning is secured or it's applied for, which led us to believe that you could check that it was applied for, which we did, but then they wanted confirmation within a week of receiving our application. And that's not very realistic in terms of zoning approval.
Yeah.
But, as I said, this is a different program, same agency, different program, but.
Kind of answer are you looking for?
I guess if you're interested in entertaining, considering providing a resolution of support, staff would need to know that. And if you wish for staff to more formally develop a policy that we're not going to pre-consider items when land use is not in place, staff could draft that policy, if that's your pleasure.
Are you at liberty to say where?
I don't think I am, given the previous conversation. I think we concluded it's premature to do that. With the best of intentions, I think they're trying to take advantage of an opportunity, but it certainly creates an awkward situation.
Kind of threw it together in about two days and forgot the resolution.
We can't really speak as to why sometimes the opportunities create a tight timeline at the end of an application process, that's, sometimes they do, that's just the way it is. But, we did recognize last time, there was some discomfort, because you couldn't talk about a lot of things that some of you wanted to talk about, that you felt were valid items to consider before providing support. And you couldn't, because we know that you can't predetermine a land use decision that's going to be pending. And that's the problem you get yourself into. And that's why we felt that, in this particular case, we'd bring it somewhat in a conceptual means, rather than just slap it right on your agenda with all the detail again, because we realized you didn't like, some of you at least didn't like that so well, and we said, we thought, well, we give you the option of telling us how you want us to handle it, and then we can handle it whichever way, you know, whatever your consensus is, we can handle it whichever way. We can run it as quickly as possible, get it on your agenda, or we could send a message that says, no, you just need to have your land use in place first. Those are really your two real options there. So, what we want to do is ask that question and see what a majority, and hopefully all of you, would agree to, and then we can, again, follow that direction accordingly.
How difficult would it be to have the land use question settled first?
From a timeframe standpoint, I don't think these can get married up on this particular project. There's, it hasn't begun.
But I mean, on any project?
The owner of the ground, or the prospective applicant, would need to proactively make application. And if, and without trying to speak to the specifics of this process, the entirety of the land use actions could include annexation, rezoning, and plating, which could all coincide one with the other, but you're looking at a couple-month process. And they don't have that kind of time in this particular situation.
In an ideal world, you'll look at the, and again, you have a lot of parties involved in a development project. You could have a separate landowner and developer and other parties. But, in an ideal world, you will have that land use action, there may be a contingency agreement of some kind, or an option for property or something, in which the contingency is a land use approval. And you'd run the land use approvals ahead, and one of the contingencies might be that if you don't get the land use approval, if you don't get the, if it's a tax credit, or whatever the grant, or whatever that is, and you would just do all that ahead of time. So, that's why I can't really speak as to why sometimes these are towards the end of the process in the timeline, with regards to submitting to the state for, whether it be a grant or tax credits, or whatever it might be. I don't know all the circumstances, but sometimes that is the way it is. And so, I guess that's why we thought we need to bring it to you and decide if you want to take it no matter what, because every applicant will tell you it's important, and if you want to do a project, and you're going to hear the same thing, it will never be different than that. And I'm not saying that that's not legitimate, I'm just saying, at this stage of the game, that's what you're going to get, and you have to decide if you're okay taking those, and knowing that you're going to have limited information, before you would issue a resolution of support or not.
What does a letter of support mean to the state? Is it, it's nothing that's binding?
Well, the last one was contingent upon land use, I suppose, right?
Well, the last one was a moderate income housing program. And as I said, the application asked whether the zoning was secured, or whether it had been applied for. When we were unable to indicate that it was proceeding very, much more quickly than the process would allow, the developer concluded he needed to withdraw the application. In this particular case, they are, once again, on a timeline. My understanding of their timeline is February application and award, and April and May, actual distribution of funds. So, once again, we may not have the land use in place even by then.
Does the letter of support imply that the zoning has been approved?
We would not check that. That was on the last application, I believe. There was a checkbox, as Mike mentioned, and we did not check that, because it was not approved. Obviously, we're not going to tell them it's approved if it's not. And so, then the state gets to decide what they're going to do with it. And in that case, they responded back within a week, when all they have to do is check their own state laws on public hearings for certain land use decisions, and they realize that you can't possibly turn around a land use decision that involves zoning, or even subdivision approval, in a week. So, it wasn't realistic. And that was, that was a, the state then made a determination at that point, or did it not?
I believe the applicant chose to just withdraw before.
So, we're not aware that the state made any determination on the grant at that point in time, as a result of that yet, but the application was withdrawn by the applicant.
So, I guess just sort of restate, Commissioner Hardy's question. How much of an endorsement, or how deep does an endorsement go?
It's a contingency endorsement, and at some point, they're going to need it on a land use, and it's really up to them, I guess, to determine how much time that they're going to allow to get the land use decision. A lot of times, these are competitive situations, and that's why the timing is important. And quite honestly, if you can't have a clean application within a competitive timeframe, you're probably going to be told no at some point in time. We don't know exactly how much time the state will allow for this or another application. But, the big, the thing for you is to decide if you're comfortable with dealing with the resolution of support with limited information on the zoning land use side.
Can we give a letter of support, even admitting that there's going to be an uphill battle, not knowing the specifics, an uphill battle for the zoning, and even suspecting the zoning application would not be approved?
No, we would not do that. We would, we can't do that, then you're predetermining your zoning decision. What we would simply say is, is when we could explain, here's the approvals that need to be obtained, and here we, and this is the, we could provide a generic timeline that fits with the calendar, not knowing if something needs to go back to a board. And then, we could indicate where they are in the timeline at this point in time. I think that's probably about all we could do, but we would no way want to predetermine in that document where we think it would go, because if we do that, then you're predetermining you're back to the same issue that creates the problem in the first place.
And I haven't put this question to the administrative program directly, but I suspect that, as the city manager said, this is a competitive program, and this application's going to be stacked up against others that have an unqualified resolution of support in another community, and this is kind of out of the norm for them. I can't imagine it would be well received.
So, there's no situation in which we could give a letter of support before the land use decision?
Yes. I mean, I want to explain the process again. You have the discretion and authority to give a letter of support at any time that you want to do that, if asked. The problem is, is that typically, when you're dealing with a development, and you're choosing whether, let's just say, tax credit, you have to decide, is that a project? You don't have to decide, if you like all projects, it doesn't really matter. But, if you don't, and there's certain projects, you don't think, if you knew all the information, you don't think you would support, you have to decide if you want to offer that support on that, for that tax credit, or grant, or whatever it is, before you've had the opportunity to deal with the land use. And until you have the opportunity to deal with the land use, or certain information you just simply can't take up, because then you start to predetermine, and then when you predetermine, you're going to conflict yourself out of making that land use decision in accordance with state laws. So, you have, we certainly have the full authority, you do, to provide, to deal with it, to make a decision based on that limited information, and to say whether you support it or not. And then, we would be sure on the request, or the question of the zoning, to check the box that says zoning has not been approved. And if they did request more information, or we could just provide it, again, we could say, this is the typical process, this is where it's at, we could do that. But, that's probably the limit. But, the real issue comes back to your comfort levels, the governing body making a decision without dealing with certain land use information. If that's not a problem, it's not a problem for us. It's not an unethical thing by any means, you're just going to have limited information to make a decision. If that doesn't bother you, we can process that through. If it does bother you, we need to know that, because if you don't want those in front of you, we would no longer put those in front of you, and probably draft a resolution policy that says, you've got to get the land use ahead of the request. So, it's really what you want to do, you're not limited in either supporting it, with the exception, or not.
And I apologize, but I need to make one clarification. There is a program that has a checkbox that zoning has been applied for. That is not the program that we're being asked to consider today. The program today is low-income housing tax credits, and it's less formal. It's just, they would like a resolution of support. Having said that, I think there's even, the less expectation that zoning is pending and will be dealt with later in this program than there is in the one that the application at least provided that opportunity, even though they wanted it in a week after turning in the application.
Mike, even though the application does make reference to zoning with this program, is that a checklist item for the agency to approve it?
I believe, once they have the resolution of support from us, they believe that the necessary city approvals are in place. I believe, once they have the resolution of support from us, they believe that the necessary city approvals are in place.
Okay. In the interest of disclosure, if the application doesn't have a checkbox, we'd still need to disclose the conditional approval, which would be based on that the applicant, or the property that's in question has not been approved for the zoning, or whatever the issue might be, just so that they're aware of that. So they, so they don't consider it a 100%, and everything's good and ready to go.
Is the request for the resolution of support, was that kicked out by the state, or were we contacted by the developer to do that?
We were, it was, we received the request from the state, and then we contacted.
Have we had any contact at all with the developer?
Yes.
Okay, we have.
They, they were apologetic that they didn't reach out to us first. They indicated they have a good working relationship with the state, and are optimistic that they could get about a month's time of leeway to deal with the land use issues.
So you could provide a qualified, a limited qualified approval or denial if you wanted to. It's your, you could certainly do that, there's not a problem with that. Our question is, is do you want to have that type of decision in front of you, when you know it's going to be limited? That's really all it is.
Has there been any work, have they come in and worked with you at all on this project before?
There were some initial contacts about availability of utilities, but just in general, not any indication that it would be a low-income housing tax credit program with, with the state. And it's a, it's a project that the owner's working on, getting the land use approvals anyway, but there hasn't been a coordinated conversation with us.
Have they had any, done any entitlement work at all with, with the city? I mean, made applications, or anything?
How far are you going to take this? I think we can answer that, the answer's yes.
Okay, there has been, okay.
This may not be the decision order we, as a commission, prefer, but I wouldn't want the city to be seen as not entertaining these kinds of requests. So I'd, I'd be in favor of giving the.
You know what, I'd be in, I, I would too, but only with this caveat, that we do both of what you're saying. Is that we offer, that we work with them on this one, but this is the last one, and we have a policy put in place that says, let's get, if you want to do these projects here, then let's get your process out in front of, get your project going. Because I think we, if we just do it a second time like we did last time, then we're just, now it's precedent to where it's like, oh, okay, this is how we're going to, this is how we're going to do it.
Well, I don't think it necessarily sets precedent, but we can do it any way that we want to. But if, as each individual occasion comes to us, we choose to handle it differently. I think that's just taking advantage of our creativity, or openness of the process. We don't have to bind ourselves on a policy, but over one instance.
To me, it's kind of a strange thing to support, send a letter of support for something we know virtually nothing about.
Does this means we're, we'll consider it?
We'll support anything.
We'll support anything, anywhere.
Let's hear the, let's hear the whole.
I don't really have a problem with it. I just, it just always seems to me like somebody has come up with something, slapped it together in a couple of days, and forgot half of what they were supposed to do. I mean, I've seen that done in the things that I worked with previously, so I don't have a problem with it, really. I just, I don't know, maybe Mayor's right on getting some kind of a process, or at least get our, get our thoughts together, so we're not hit with it. But, I mean, you know, I'll vote for it.
Well, I think, I think, I think the state assumes that these people have been doing that. Otherwise, they, the process would be, hey, go get your community's support, and then we'll figure the rest of it out.
Well, and, and, and once, if you do take it up, and let's say that even based on limited information, you feel like you want to support the project from, with a resolution of support, it will, it will have to be a conditioned resolution. And then the risk is really back with the developer on what that means when it goes to the state, and the state then realizes the land use, and the state may know that already, but that they know that the land use actions are not in place, and they're going to have to wait, and then they have to make a decision with regards to that application and other applications. But quite honestly, that's probably a calculated risk that the developer takes into consideration when they ask.
Well, I'll just remind, the vote on that last one was three-two, to show support.
Yeah.
I'm guessing the state already knows that it wasn't done in the right order, just by the fact that that letter isn't there.
Which, which I don't know how the state looks at resolutions of support when there's three-two roads. So-so.
I'm not sure that that matters.
Right, and the vote doesn't actually get reported out, just the approved resolution.
So Commissioner Davis, Commissioner Hardy, need your thoughts on whether you want that brought to you?
I prefer, I would prefer it didn't.
Prefer it what?
Just in case we were, if we're not going, if we're not going to pursue a policy that says, you know, if that's not part of it, then, then I can't go along with that, so.
I like an orderly way of doing things. There'll always be exceptions, but I think this would be a good opportunity to, to set our general policy. I mean, anything we have a policy for, we always entertain an exception, exceptions. But it's kind of hard to bid on a secret gift at an auction when you're not allowed to look inside. You don't, I mean, it's, it's hard to say whether I'd want to give a letter of support without knowing what it is. But I mean, generally, it sounds like a great idea, but.
Well, you will have certain information, you just won't have all the land use information, unfortunately. But there will be certain information, it won't be a complete mystery.
We would entertain this in a study session, executive session, or open meeting?
Well, that's a good question. Last time, we had a study session. I don't, I haven't, what's the timeline?
I think the timing is such, they are going to want action next week, or the week after, at the latest.
So probably irregular.
I'd like to know it's in the box.
Are we, are we going to be getting the, you can't ask that question, you can't ask that?
Yes. Unfortunately, yes, I think we have to, because we can't allow you to. The unfortunate thing, as you know, is as you start talking about it, it's really easy to get over to that land use line. And we have to be aware of that, because we don't want you to conflict yourselves out. And what happens is, is if everything goes great, and everybody's happy, and there's no one that opposes it, no one raises the issue, no big deal, right? But if at any time on a development situation, there's opposition, typically, they'll look for the conflicts as a means to go and try to unwind that decision. And so if you, if you provide conflicts, which you shouldn't do anyway, it can unwind the decision to begin with. So we don't want you to be there. Plus, it's, you don't want to, communities in which they get their decisions unwound don't have very strong reputations for the professional governance. So that's why we're there, to try to make sure we see the line, and make sure that you know where, which side you're on.
So the best situation is if we know nothing, or very little.
About anything that directly deals with any upcoming land use decision that's quasi-judicial, yes.
So that information will be filtered out as the.
It would be, yeah, we would not bring that information to you. We would ask the applicant not to bring that information to you, or to bring it to you individually at any time, because then the applicant risks putting you in that position. And again, if questions come up in the discussion that, in consultation with legal counsel, that we believe take you to that side, we would probably have to say, hey, sorry, but we're not sure we can answer that question. So that's the risk that you have when you take an issue like this up early, before you, before the land use is in place.
And at that point, we could always decline to go any further with the.
Sure, if you want to, absolutely.
Okay.
Kind of a.
Where, where are you?
It's kind of a strange way to make a decision, but I would, I would say, if it doesn't cost us much, you know, there's no harm in submitting it, I guess, I don't know.
Is that a motion?
In review, well, submitting the letter of support to review the project as it unfolds, is that what?
All we're asking is if you would like to have it brought to you for consideration of the.
It doesn't, I don't know that it really changes anything. If we send a letter of support, or a resolution of support, but then later on, we find out that the project's in the wrong place, then we can voice our displeasure at that time, I guess.
But this decision would be just, just to review it?
Good luck on winding that, when they say, great, you got the grant, and then you tell them like, oh, sorry, we didn't want it there.
Well, that's why I was asking, why do we have to make this?
That's, that's the, that's.
Well, that can't make, we can't make that decision.
You're, today, the question is simply, do you want us to bring all the project information that you can talk about, or have the applicant bring that, and then anything we can add, that doesn't cause you to cross the line into the quasi-judicial land use conversation? And so that you would, so that you'd be in a position of making a, what I'd call a limited decision, or a decision with a bit of a contingency, or an exception to it, based on limited information with regards to the support? Or lack thereof, I suppose.
I think, I would prefer that situation where we know at least something about.
Okay, so you're comfortable taking up the issue, and then knowing you might have limited information, and deciding with what you have.
Mm-hmm. You'd not be comfortable knowing that we don't, we're not obligated to do anything just by hearing the information?
No, you're, you're never obligated. I mean, again, from a legal perspective, you're never obligated. How you, whether you feel obligated is different, I can't, I can't address that.
So I guess you're bringing it up next week, so.
If, yeah, if, if the consensus, the general consensus, or majority consensus is that you want us to bring it to you, we will let them know that we'll bring it to you.
That's the math.
Very good, thank you.
Sounds fine.
Okay. Any other, other business?
I was going to throw out one item. With the change in the election laws for local government, I was wondering if it was appropriate at this time to bring up the changing of the guard for the next year.
Want to move it up a little?
Commissioners, we've, I've been.
Better not, I already have invitations printed.
I've been speaking with legal, with legal counsel on that, and we're planning to still be ahead of your April timeframe to have that conversation. I don't think it's a difficult conversation, in the sense that I think we have a pretty good idea of what you want to do. You do need, you will need to establish for sure when you would like your elections, because right now, it doesn't appear there's a bill that will change that this year, which is a little surprising. So you will get the choice of odd or even years in the fall. And we know fall is a requirement, but odd or even years, years is still your choice. We know what we're going to presume you would do, but we'll have you formally tell us. And also from that, because depending on when your election is, has a little impact of what you might do with the changing of the guard. Again, we think from strategic planning conversation, we have a pretty good idea of that as well. And then final thing is, is another piece to it is just kind of discussing also what changes we'll have to make, if any. And I think we'll have to sum in our code with, as it relates to the council manager plan of government that you have, because of the change that that election law created with the statutes with regards to the council or commission plan of government. So those are the three things, but we're, we're, we're already on the time schedule to bring that ahead in time to deal with that. And that way, we can kind of be a little more prepared to answer questions, I think, for you. But we'll have it ahead of your typical April changing of the guard timeframe. We are thinking about it.
I have invitations printed, so.
That changes everything.
Well, I think, and, just to kind of pull on the thread a little bit, is that, are we talking about, because the way I'm seeing it, is that Madam Vice-Mayor, you will be mayor for a year and nine months.
I don't know what it'll turn out to be, but.
But I mean, that's, because I think that after that, then following the next election will be the changing of the guard.
Yeah, that would presumably reset you.
Were you looking at, addressing that, or were you looking at addressing, doing a changing of the guard in April of next year as well?
Well, that's what I was, that's what I was wondering.
Okay. And is that what you're?
Yeah, we'll, we'll come back, we want to, we need to, I think it sounds like you're going to need a little conversation time on that. And so our objective is to bring you your choices, which are fairly limited. Talk about any of the changes that need to happen in the code as well at the same time, and then, and then get your direction. Make sure that it's consistent with what we think it would be.
Would elections then, I mean, I'm trying to wrap my head around what they did to. Then elections for city would be then 2017?
If you stay with odd number of years, you'll be in the fall of 2017 for elections, and then the terms will begin in January 1st of 2018.
Right.
Okay.
Well, nobody's saying that we're going to move beyond that, right?
I don't think so.
Yeah, okay, good, because that probably isn't going to fly. Okay, good.
So we'll be, we'll be bringing that to you pretty quickly, and give you a chance to talk about it. Appreciate the reminder as well.
Well, sort of serve an additional year.
No.
Okay. Okay, well, I'll just let everybody know, I just got this letter today when I sat down here, but apparently, we are. It says here that we've been named, Salina, Kansas was named a 2015 Tree City USA by Arbor Day Foundation. And I, I hope that meant 2016, so, unless it's retroactive.
Well, I, I can't, I have to go back and look at the Arbor Day stuff. We, we historically have gotten that award and designation. It may be at, at the end of the year that they're awarding it, that.
Oh, okay.
Give it to you the next year, so it very well could be referring to 15.
Apparently, our trees did well enough in 2015, so.
Yeah.
Way to go, trees.
That's a pretty big deal in central Kansas, it means you're planting some trees, and that's a good thing.
Go Salina trees.
I've, I've got one item, but I want to make sure you're finished.
Okay, any, any other before executive session stuff? No, okay, go ahead.
Real quick, it goes back to the announcement you made earlier. I want to, it's a good learning opportunity. We, as one might expect, we don't get calls with threats, like a bomb threat, or threats like that, very often at all. I do recall, quite a few years ago, we had a different type of threat. One thing I think it's important that the public understands, and that everybody in the room understands, and I think we'll need to remind our employees as well, because we don't get these very often, is that we do have, and our employees have, at their desks, they have a procedure in that case. And we have them for tornadoes, fires, things like that. So fairly typical, it's just they don't happen very often. And one of the things is that when this happens, the first question that might be in someone's mind is, is, well, how come if, once the call comes in, we don't announce it quickly, and everybody leaves, and, you know, and, and, and we all just, everything's disrupted, and everybody leaves because of the inherent danger, and so forth. And the, and our policy is in line with, I have in front, I don't have ours in front of me. I did look at it earlier when we had to leave the room, but I have in front of me the Homeland Security policy. And ours is almost verbatim, as far as the process is. And the first thing they tell you to do is remain calm, because no one thinks right when they're not calm, when their emotions and anxiety are getting the best of them. Then they tell you to listen carefully, try to get all the information you can. If someone calls in, anything you can get, you try to get that information. So the more you have, the more evidence you have. You're determining two things really out of that. Is it a credible threat initially? You start thinking about that, and then also, you want to catch whoever's doing it, right? And then next thing you do is you call your law enforcement, and that's the other thing. And then you work with your law enforcement, who, who will do an initial scan of the building, as we talked about, to determine if there's a credible threat. And they're looking for things like suspicious packages, there's all kinds of things they look for, and so they do that. It's just any evidence, not actually finding a threat, it's any evidence that would suggest, hey, it's credible enough, let's then choose to evacuate. It says, do not evacuate the building until police arrive and evaluate the threat. That's a typical thing. So the typical practice, doesn't mean you can't, but you have to remember, sometimes a threat is to get people out of the building for a reason. And we've seen historically that that can be a very bad thing as well. So there's reasons, sometimes a threat isn't what they're, what you're hearing, it's, it's, it's sometimes a disguised threat. But the, the Homeland Security recommendation, their policy, is to judge the threat based on consultation with your law enforcement, and any other specials you may have available at that time. And then determine if there's any evidence whatsoever that makes it a credible threat. If there is, you would then choose, you could choose to evacuate, judge that. But until such time, you would not evacuate. So I think it's important for people to understand that, especially if they were in the building today, our employees, and so forth, because the first reaction is, oh, there's a threat, let's all just get out and leave. And that's not always the best approach, and that's why we base our approach and protocols on national standards. And that's why I wanted to go over that, I think it's important for everybody to know. Our folks followed the protocols to the letter. They did a great job, very proud of that. Our law enforcement came over, did their thing. Salina County Law Enforcement assisted as well in the building. Everyone worked together very, very well. And then, again, as we mentioned, the, after the scan and so forth, they found that they did not believe that there was a credible threat, and that the building is safe. So, anyway, without going through that, it's really helpful, because the anxiety, it can, it can, I can see where someone could be concerned about that. So, thank you.
Once again, we need to thank the police.
When a call comes in like that, does that person, whoever receives it, they go directly to you, or what?
Well, it depends where I'm at, I'm not often where they can access me. And so what'll typically happen is, is the, the employees have that protocol at their desk, and so they're expected to have that available, so they can ask questions and so forth, get all the information that the caller is willing to give them. But once that is completed, then the next step is really to call the police department. But typically, you'll see probably an immediate supervisor, and maybe even a department head involved in that immediately, because our offices, most of them, those folks are right there nearby, so you'll have that. But the police department will get the call ASAP. And then we do rely on their professional training and so forth, in making a determination, once they're involved with it. But there have been situations in which there's been a threat in a building, folks have gone out of the building, and the results have not been what they thought they would be. And so that's why, it's probably one of many reasons why you don't simply just holler out evacuation the first, as you give a threat. And the other thing is, is by far, a significantly high percentage of these threats are false, and their intent is not to harm, is to harass and disrupt. And sometimes they can be successful. And if you allow that to be successful without credible evidence whatsoever, you'll get more and more of those. So that's the other thing to keep in mind. So our folks followed the protocol, or they did a great job, and everyone worked well together. We're very happy with the ending.
And I appreciate all of you sticking around, too. And I appreciate all of you sticking around, too.
I appreciate you looking.
Price was right.
Are we ready for executive session? This is under legal personnel, trade secrets, property acquisition. I moved to recess into executive session for 60 minutes to discuss with legal counsel matters subject to the attorney-client privilege, for the reason that the public discussion of those matters would waive the privilege and adversely affect the city's interest in the matters, and for the purpose of discussing matters pertaining to non-elected city personnel, for the reason that public discussion of the matter would violate the privacy rights of the non-elected personnel involved, and to discuss confidential data relating to the financial affairs and trade secrets of a corporation, for the reason that public discussion of the information would competitively disadvantage the corporation, and discuss matters pertaining to the acquisition of real estate, for the reason that public discussion of the matter would adversely affect the city's position in relation to acquisition of the real estate, and reconvene at 6:10 PM.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to recess into executive sessions for more reasons than I can repeat. Pretty much every reason there is. All right. Will, will we be conducting any business following this?
No, Mayor, we don't expect.
Okay, there will be no business following this. Have a motion in a second to recess into executive session for 60 minutes, and return at 6:10. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero. We're in executive session.